Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome to the April 14th, 2025 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted and until it is their opportunity to speak, planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For action items, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'd like to ask you all to join me in invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise for your mighty power and guidance. We thank you for this day and thank you too for the many blessings in our lives, for our great country and for the opportunity to live in freedom. We ask your blessings on our leaders and we ask that you give each one of us here today the wisdom to make the right choices so that our decisions will be in the best interests of the people of Hillsborough County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please go ahead and call roll.
Yeah.
Buzzer?
Cardenas?
Here.
Kona?
Here.
Cress?
Lauk?
Saria?
Seben?
Orton?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
Do you have a quorum, sir?
Thank you. All right. Next up is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings. First, Hillsborough County Planning Commission Public Hearing on Hillsborough County Plan Amendments Meeting Minutes, February 24th, 2025, and Hillsborough County Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, March 10th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second out there?
Second.
Right, motion by Commissioner Kona. A second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions, discussions from the commissioners? Not seeing any, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Public input. We did not have anyone sign up for public input, so we will move on to our first agenda or our third agenda item. Number three, presentation, 3A, is infrastructure planning related to the expansion of the urban service area, and the presenters are a lot of Hillsborough County staff members.
And Mr. Chair, just as an introduction, I want to introduce Greg Hordell, Deputy County Administrator, who is here joined by, as you said, a number of Hillsborough County staff. They're here in response to the public hearing you all had on the publicly-initiated expansions of the urban service area, in which there were a number of questions related to infrastructure service and how the planning would occur for this expanded area into the urban service area. The Board of County Commissioners did move forward with transmittal of those plan amendments to expand the urban service area at their hearing in March, and the county staff was very kind to come to this meeting and continue the dialogue on how that planning would occur and answer some of the questions that you all had. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hordell.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us to take a little bit of your time to talk about some of the questions that you had and the concerns that you expressed when we heard the publicly-initiated plan amendment from the Board of County Commissioners. As you know, we have for years been wrestling with how, when, where to expand the urban service boundary. It's not a new topic. It's something that we spend an awful lot of time on. It's something that we feel very strongly about because we don't want to end up in a position where we're constrained with our development area and then have prices start to go up within the incorporated and also the urban service boundary so that things become more unaffordable. We're very concerned about that. We also have a lot of people continuing to move into Hillsborough County. As you're aware, we're at about 1.5 million now. In the not-too-distant future, it's going to be about 2 million. So where are all those people going to go? And I know I'm really just sort of table-setting now because you wrestle with these questions on a monthly basis. I'm absolutely certain you've asked these very same questions, and I understand as you considered the publicly-initiated plan amendment, you did raise some of these same concerns. I will ask members of my staff to come up and talk about their specific area of expertise so that you can get an understanding what we do when we analyze these and make recommendations to our board. I'm hopeful that it gives you some insight and appreciation for the level of detail that we put forward. I'm certain that your staff does the same thing. We have a great collaborative relationship with your staff. We certainly want to make sure that we answer your questions. On our first run-through, as I told your chair, it was about five hours, so I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. It's 300 slides, and as long as everybody's good, we'll walk through it. I am...
It's 2:20.
Yeah, 2:20. Yeah, we did cut it down. We will be expeditious in our comments, but I do want to, I do want you to understand that this is a large topic for us. It's wide-ranging. There's a lot of things that impinge on our decisions to recommend development and explain it to our board and the citizens that come to our meetings. So with no further ado, I'll introduce our first speaker, John Patrick.
Thank you, Greg. Yeah, here it is. Thank you, Planning Commission Board members. Thank you for our time. So as Greg said, we have been, we have been contemplating this area for a long time. You guys have looked at it as well. So before each of the individual infrastructure people come and talk to you about their plans for this area, we want to kind of table-set this to what our conversation is. What is the future? What is the scale of the future development we are actually looking at? So the RP2 by itself is 23,000 acres. That's a lot of area. But what we are not including in that is the RP2 within the urban service area, which is Fishhawk and the E-Lab and the conservation area. That leaves us to only 16,000 acres. That still seems to be a large, very large number to be expanding. So what we did, just like your staff, what they did is look at what is, what is developed and what are we really talking about. So in South County, you can see that most of the, most of the areas south of 674 is planned development, which is already approved, entitled, and it's at various stages of development. Some are under construction, some are in the process of getting their PD approved. So that does not, that is not being impacted by what we are talking about, expanding the urban service area. So this map actually gives you a better look at what it is actually we are talking about. Those areas that doesn't have a mask between those blue areas, that is what we are talking about. So how much is that? That's about 6,200 acres. That is, give or take, how you calculate it. If I can come up with an exact value, I'll be making a lot of money in the stock market right now. So that's, that's an estimate of 6,200. Of the 6,200, how much can we develop? If you have a lot of smaller parcels and a lot of owners, it's really hard to develop a unified plan and, and for a developer to develop. So we looked at properties that's more than 50 acres. That is really 15, 15 parcels, 10 property owners. It's, it's really good chance that those are the ones that can develop faster. Greater than 10 acres, yes, they can also develop as subdivisions in those areas. So wiggling it further down, we are talking about from 6,200 acres to 4,500 acres. That is what the developable land we have, apart from the PDs that is already approved. So 4,500 acres. Again, this is just an estimate. Yes, 10-acre lots can also develop into subdivisions, but this is more likely what will happen, what could happen, not will. I can never say will. So 4,500 acres multiplied by four units per acre, that is 8,000. That is almost a theoretical maximum. That's, you need roads, stormwater, open spaces, all that you need. So as a rule of thumb, we, we kind of take out 70, 75% can be used, 25 for the infrastructure. So what are we talking about? You're talking about 13,000 units, 13,500 dwelling units, about. Now, that is the most ideal form of development. You can, if you are able to force those developers to use their land the most effective way, you may squeeze out 3,500 out of them. But in reality, what has happened, based on a study that was done not during this LRTP, it was before, the previous LRTP, we looked at the entire county and said, so how are we developing? What we found was it was only 45% of the land is being used. Of a half hundred acres, it's only 45 acres is being used for developing the units. So that's, that's, that's a low ball. I'm, hopefully it's getting better. I don't know, I have the data for what's happening right now, but it has not changed a whole lot, in unincorporated at least. So if we take that low end of it, it's 8,100 units. So it is somewhere, the, the truth of this, what is going to be built is anywhere between 8,100 to 13,500. It's a long, long, it's a widespread, but it's a long-range plan. So you're going to have a widespread. So, so that is what kind of units we are going to be looking at in the near future. So I just wanted to give you guys the scale of what is going to happen in that area, what is this privately-initiated improvement amendment is going to do to that area. Given this background, now I will let individual departments come and talk to you about what they are planning for this area in terms of fire, in terms of water resources, in terms of parks. I think that will be more enlightening. We have a chief.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Jason Doggy. I'm our fire chief. Thank you for having me today. Anytime I get an opportunity to talk about our planning, future fire stations, I'm excited to do that. As we know, county's grown by leaps and bounds, and my job as the fire chief is to make sure we can provide the citizens with the coverage we need, with the response times we need, and to make sure that we get the job done and protecting lives and property. So with that, I'll share a little bit of information with you that we have. So if we look at the amended areas surrounded in the southwest, north, we have seven existing stations currently that are fully operational, and those stations being Lithia, Summerfield, Sundance, Wyamama, Sun City, Fishhawk, and Rodine. One thing to really notice about that is three of those stations have been placed in since 2018, with that being Fishhawk, Rodine Road, and the Wyamama rebuild station. So we're well on our way to being prepared for the growth that we're going to see. But with that, we have some other obstacles that we need to make sure that we accomplish with fire rescue. So with that, what we've, what Hillsborough County Fire Rescue has done, we've commissioned a planning consultant to develop capital facilities, master plans, and to identify future capital and facilities needs countywide. The master plans have been updated since 2003. We had another one in 2007, 2011, 2017, 2019, and 2023. So utilizing those master plans, what we've learned is we, we got three stations in progress currently that, in some type of progress, I should say. So Station 47, that's North Sun City, it's currently funded and out for bid. So we're looking forward to hopefully having that station come online in the next two years or so. We also look at Station Number 51 as water set. We're, we're currently looking at land acquisition for that. That's proposed, funded by the CIT and FY 2030, and then the Berry Bay area is proposed with CIT funding in 2033. We also have two additional, let's see if this caught up to me. So we got two additional parcels that we're looking at that will work with the master plan, and that's Station 58, which is Rodine East, and that would be with proposed CIT funds for FY 2040. And then we're also looking in the Baumfire Station Number 62, which would be on County Road 672 in Carlton. Of course, all of this is dependent on the roadways and the infrastructure that's going to be built. So the, we were never provided with the population numbers, but we were given a projection of the dwelling units of being around 48,000 units. So with that, and using the projection of 2.25 people per dwelling, and that's kind of a number that's NFPA, which is kind of my National Fire Protection Association, they kind of look at those guidelines and say you need this many stations for many homes and population. So about 18,000 residents per fire station. So currently, I'm proud to say that we have five stations that are currently in the process in some way planned for. We're looking for that sixth station, and that's where I was telling you, that's on Baumroad. But I think as a department, we're well-prepared, thanks to our county administration and support from folks like you, to move us forward in, with the urban service area. So if I could answer any questions, I'd be happy to. If not, I'll pass on to the next person. Good? All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rick Valdez, Director of Parks and Recreation for Hillsborough County. We're very thankful to be here today and be part of this conversation. So the way this would impact us is both plan amendments are within our park's south impact fee zone. The impact fees are the dedicated funding source that allows parks to expand and increase capacity. The Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Policy recommends active recreational parks within proximity of the population we serve. So as the population grows, we want to be sure that we're there to build our new parks, add new trails, all the things that people enjoy. Proposed amendments would result in additional population of about 54,545 residents pursuant to Policy 1.1.5, County Parks and Recreation Facilities LOS. This would require additional 3.3 miles of active parks, trails, and approximately 158 acres of additional active parks. And it says there, with minimum 10-acre increments, we try not to build very small pocket parks anymore. We start with at least 10 acres of parkland. Funding, as mentioned, capital funding. We, we are largely supported by park impact fees. We also have the CIT renewal out there, and we're anticipating hopefully $53 million to come to parks, which is allocated to different sites throughout the county. And of course, new development would generate additional park impact fees. That's where the impact fees come from. Operating funds, we're substantially supported by the MSTU ad valorem funds, as well as our user fees. They're deposited back into the general fund, and that's reallocated with, by the county commissioners. And then, of course, new development would generate additional property taxes, as well as the additional impact fees. I'll be here to answer any questions, and if you don't have any now, I'll pass it on to the next person. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Josh Bellotti, Director of Engineering and Operations for Hillsborough County. I'm here representing our Public Works Administration. So our role here is going to be looking at the existing transportation infrastructure. Across the county, we're responsible for over 7,500 lane miles of county roads. So it's a lot. In fact, that amount of lane miles is more than five state departments of transportation. So we look at this specific area here, starting with the RP2 expansion area. There is a total of 195 lane miles within those areas. The good news here is that most of those roads are in fair or better condition, based on our latest and updated and ongoing condition assessment that we do on all of our roadways across the county. However, there are some roads in that area that are in poor condition or are substandard. And so we've detailed that here, 20 lane miles in total. And enhancements for those, whenever we do repaving or road resurfacing project, we'll look to make other enhancements that might include shoulder repair or addressing safety issues, adding additional bike ped features and those kind of things. So for, for that quantity here in this RP2 area, we're estimating a total of about $12 million. And so what sources might the county look to, to, to fund those types of improvements? We have our typical funding sources that we utilize for our resurfacing program, gas tax, ad valorem, CIT, sometimes we're able to pursue grant funding. Obviously, those funding sources are somewhat limited, and there's definitely a need, a great need, and many different needs vying for those funds across the county. So another potential funding source is mobility fees, but obviously recognizing again that they're not available to be utilized for maintenance and repair of existing. they're not available to be utilized for maintenance and repair of existing infrastructure, only for the eligible elements of those projects that might include capacity or safety enhancements, expansion of bike and ped facilities. Similarly, with WVR2 expansion area, we took a look at those existing roads. There are far fewer roads within that area, only thirty-three lane miles in total. Eight lane miles of those are, are below fair condition, where we would look to address both the condition of the pavement, as well as, you know, substandard shoulders and drainage and bike ped facilities. So we're looking at five million dollars in that situation, and again, similar with the funding sources. So that's what we have for Public Works.
Hi, thank you. My name's Lisa Ray. I'm Director of Water Resources for Hillsborough County. And we currently provide about forty-five to fifty million gallons per day of drinking water to our customers, and, I'm sorry, collect that much wastewater and provide seventy-five to eighty million gallons per day of drinking water. We're servicing two really distinct areas, the northwest area, which does not have a lot of growth, and then the south-central area, which is experiencing a lot of growth. So starting and only focusing on the south-central area, on the potable water side, we have a new water treatment plant that we anticipate coming online in 2029. It was originally sized and planned for this being two units per acre. Now, we are early in the process, we have time to adjust the plans as needed. Between now and completion of the plant, our biggest challenge is going to be pressure issues. Because of the location of this Baum area, if you see the map, the white is the highest elevation. Much of this development is happening in kind of the brown and the white area. Our existing plants are down more in the green and yellow area. So if you have, and we're pumping up to a higher elevation from a lower area, we lose pressure. And so we start having some concerns when it comes to the availability of water, especially early in the morning when people are irrigating their grass. Once the new plant is built, it's going to be up in the brownish-white area. So it's going to be up at that higher elevation. And that concern is going to be gone at that point, and we'll be able to size it, since we're early enough in the process, to handle these additional demands. Our biggest concern is this gap time. And it really deals with fire flow, because if you need to pull water and everybody's irrigating and the pressures are low, we're going to have some concerns and some challenges. We're already working through that with different developers, and we're looking at different options to bridge from now until then. But this is happening at a good time in terms of allowing us to adjust our plan to accommodate these additional flow demands that we're going to see. There are things that we can do also that are going to help reduce those demands between now and then. In the dry season, where we're at right now, about fifty percent of potable water is being put on the yard for irrigation purposes. So that contributes to a lot of the flow and the demand. That's why the amount of drinking water distributed is almost twice as much as the amount of wastewater collected because of that use. So working with our communities to enhance the use of reclaimed water for irrigation purposes, and also working with educating our community about how best to irrigate, and coordinating with SWIFTMUD and with IFAS on that, will help us also bridge that gap, but it's also the best thing for the long-term health of our community. On the wastewater side, we're also at a good point, because we are in design, probably at about sixty percent. We've already had almost sixty million dollars' worth of funding approved by the board towards this. In the end, this is going to be about an eight-hundred-million-dollar project. It's a new wastewater treatment plant that, at this point, we will be able to adjust, again, same thing I was talking about on the water side, adjust the capacity that we are planning for. So this is coming at a good time in that regard. The biggest plant that is going to be impacted by this area is going to be the South County Plant. So that's the graph on the bottom left. And as you can see, around twenty-eight, the red line is the permitted capacity. Again, for us, it's timing. When will the houses come in versus when will we have our plant constructed? And as we get closer to the red line, these are some of those safeguards that exist. If we are not able to treat the flow, then the permits are not going to get signed. The approvals will not go through. They'll be paused until we are able to finish construction on that plant, and then they'll be able to move forward again. So for us, the timing of this, we had not been planning for it, but now we are able to adjust our plans accordingly to increase the flows on both the water and the wastewater side, and we're able to look at the funding. Our funding sources are, our funding sources are user fees. We also have impact fees, AGRF, which is accrued guaranteed revenue fees. And the impact fees and the AGRF are paid by the developer upfront. User fees are paid by residents as they purchase water and wastewater services from us. So in terms of moving forward with this, it allows us to reevaluate what those fees are, and we are working on that right now with our consultant. Thank you.
I have a question. And correct me if I'm wrong, it seemed like, I remember maybe a year, two years ago, they were talking about adding a pump station, you know, out in, close to South County, I think, like Fishhawk or something like that.
And that was put in place, and that really provided a lot of increased pressures down farther south towards the Sun City area, and it helped with some pressure pockets we were having down south. There were a total of four projects proposed to address the water needs throughout the south-central area. Three of them have been completed, and the last one is this new plant. And the new plant that's at that higher elevation is really the, a key part of making sure the whole system works. We had a very large pipeline installed, forty-two to forty-eight inch, to bring water from the Lithia area all the way down to the Sun City area. We had pump stations installed, a booster pump stations installed, and we're coordinating right now with Tampa Bay Water on another large pipeline to help bring more water down. So all four of those have to be working together to actually provide the whole supply, and that's where the timing issue comes in.
For those, to synchronize those, when do you project that time? Is it twenty-nine you're talking about?
Twenty-twenty-nine is when we anticipate the water plant being completed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner Kress?
I have a, maybe a few questions. Do you want us to save them for the end, or?
Yeah, I was going to think we should probably let them go through their presentations, and then we'll save the questions for the end.
Fortunately, this is the last slide, so. And I promised to try and be brief, and I, I think you can appreciate the level of detail that we go through and the amount of work that we put into it. This is only a thumbnail sketch of what we evaluate as we go through this process of looking at development. There are funding sources for future development. You can see them on your screen, if you have that up. If you don't, I'll be happy to read them. But mobility fees, the MUFASs, the, the mobility fee agreements, impact fees, school, excuse me, the community investment tax, user fees and assessments, gas tax and ad valorem. They all work together to help create the built environment. No one of them is, is the be-all and end-all answer for all the things that need to happen in any expansion area. So I'd like to close with this before we get to your questions, because I'm, I'm sure you have some, and we're happy to stay as long as you want to answer them. From a policy perspective, our board felt it was important for us to start looking at expansion of the urban service boundary in a broader and more coordinated way. What has happened, and it's really not that atypical for large counties, we've had a number of privately initiated expansions over the past couple of decades. That doesn't allow us to plan extremely well for growth. If we identify the area now and say, these are the things that we know we want to see, we're able to then start devoting capital dollars to making the improvements before we get behind the eight ball. And I think a lot of what you see out in some areas of the county where we have had a number of smaller privately-initiated expansions, we cumulatively got behind the eight ball, with transportation, with water and sewer, and other services. We don't want to do that. We don't think that that's good planning. We hope you agree. So we think that it's important for us to identify those areas, devote the time and energy to actually planning out the capital infrastructure, and make those investments in conjunction with the development community. This isn't the first area that we'll be talking about. Again, as a policy matter, our board thought that it was very important to say, in the remainder of the county that's currently not in the urban service boundary, where are the areas where it seems to make sense? I will thank you for the invaluable support of Planning Commission staff. They have been a great collaborative partner as we've gone through these exercises, and none of these discussions are easy. I know that. But we can't continue to do nothing. We have to start planning for the future that we want to see and not just wait for it to come to us piecemeal. That's all I have, and I have amazing staff who are more than happy to answer any questions that you can come up with.
All right. Thank you. Kick it over to you, Commissioner Kress, to start it off.
Mr. Horwittell, this is probably for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, does development pay for itself? Loaded question.
Yeah, so there are studies on both sides that say it does pay for itself and it doesn't. All I can say from my perspective is, the fee structures that we have in place are expected to pay for the public investment that we need to make. We will be going through, this next year, all of our fees are subject to renewal. So we'll be looking very closely at what past performance has been and what our needs are. And I can say with certainty that when those reports come before the board, we will be identifying what we believe to be the cost to pay for that development. Ultimately, as a policy matter, the percentage, whether that's a hundred percent, or seventy-five, or fifty, that rests with the Board of County Commissioners. They are very sensitive to making sure that we do pay our way, but they're also sensitive to making sure that we don't overburden and do it in a, in a fashion that drops or raises fees immediately. Many times, we'll start to factor in every year an increase, so it gets to the hundred percent at a point in time.
Commissioner Orton?
I just wanted to clarify. I'm with the school, and when we look at that number, sixteen thousand acres, and then you multiply that by four, they are, school board members, I think, in sixty-four thousand new dwelling units. But I understand that a lot of the private companies or private developers have already developed a large portion of that sixteen thousand acres. And I believe somebody said that there were only forty-five hundred acres left of developable land. Is that correct? So when I take this forward, they're not freaking out about the sixteen thousand acres and sixty-four thousand new homes. Is that correct?
That's a great question, and we want to make sure that we're all talking about the amount that is developable. In our experience, what we've seen is not the max development. We can argue whether or not that's a good thing. In the city of Tampa, for example, it probably is a good thing if they max out what their allowed zoning gives them in a downtown area. In a suburban development pattern like we have here, we don't see that. We see, frankly, a lot less than what is permitted. There's lots of reasons why that could be, but there's, from our experience, again, I can only speak to that, there's not the number, there's not the number of houses that the zoning would allow, it's the number that ends up getting built that we end up focusing on. And I don't know if anybody has any clarification for that? But we're pretty confident in the numbers that we have. We've looked at the development pattern, there's a lot that's already underway. We don't think this particular expansion area is as bad as it may seem at first blush.
Ms. Orneeta?
And I would just add to that, that certainly, as you know, when we present any plan amendment, we present the, the maximum of the land use category, and so that was what was presented as part of the plan amendment packet on this. And certainly, that does include lands that have existing entitlements, because we have to look at from a long-range perspective, that an applicant may come back in and ask to modify their entitlements, or redevelop their property. We're looking at it from a long-range standpoint, but I think, so somewhere in between, maybe the, you know, none of us has a crystal ball, but the, I think that's a very practical way of looking at it from a what's developable standpoint.
The forty-five acres, forty-five hundred acres just sounds so much nicer.
And I, I have no quarrel whatsoever with how your staff looks at this. They're doing you a service by saying, this is, you know, in ideal world, ideal conditions, this is what could happen. We don't see that on a practical basis. We just don't. And I'm here to tell you from our experience, it's significantly lower. I would not encourage you to say, oh, well, just ignore what your staff is telling you, because again, they're giving you good counsel, good advice. What I would tell you, though, is to temper that with the reality of, this is real life, this is what happens, and we have multiple examples of that if we need to. Adam, I don't know if you want to speak to it or not. I'm not saying you have to, but you can just say yes, that's generally what we see.
All right. I had a couple of questions, and I wanted to thank you all for being here, because obviously, I'm probably a big part of the reason why all this happened. So it's very appreciated to have all of you here. I think this was probably a discussion that I wanted to have happen last time, right, that we didn't have happen when all the people were in the room and all the citizens could have heard of it. It probably could have calmed a couple of people down, and, you know, I think the information you all have given today has been really good, answered a lot of the questions we were looking at back then. And I think it, you know, this idea of being in between and going from the max to the min, and knowing that we're going to land somewhere in the middle kind of changes the color of the argument. I did have two key questions, though. Mr. Biladi spoke really well about pavements and surfacing, but I didn't really hear much about traffic. And that was a big issue for a lot of the citizens who were in here when we had that meeting, was the traffic that's there now, and are there any thoughts to how we're going to handle the traffic going forward? Is there going to be an issue even for traffic going forward with these new numbers that we're speaking about?
I don't have a lot of information to share on that, just to, to let you know, we were looking at conditions. I think the Transportation Planning Organization has done some look at those projections, and we might be able to share some of that with you, if you haven't seen that already.
Yeah, the, the TPO had done an analysis of this area with the long-range transportation plan, and what they found is that this specific area of Baum Wyamama area, you're not going to have a capacity problem per se, it's going to be the upstream traffic. It goes and hits three oh one, forty-one, I-75. That's where the real problem starts happening. There might be some operational improvements that is required at major intersections in this area as development progresses, but we don't have information on that. It depends on how, what gets developed. So there might be intersection improvements that may be needed for, for safety purposes.
What about local roads? I know I sit on the Transportation Board and I do transportation research, so I understand the state model for transportation. I get that, but that's a separate issue for transportation at the sub-county level. We're talking about two different issues here. So through traffic through the county is one thing, and then inter-county traffic in neighborhoods is a different thing. And if you don't have that information, that's understandable, but that's the question I'm asking. At an inter-county level, in neighborhoods, what, what do we think we're going to be seeing down there with all this new development coming in? And what do we think we're going to do in reaction to it, if there is some sort of issue?
So there is, so there is different levels, yes. You're absolutely right. There's regional traffic, and there is traffic within the sub-area itself, and there is traffic within the subdivision itself. The subdivision part of it, let's take it from subdivision to local to regional. Regional, we kind of know that it is on the other side, outside this boundary, that's where the real problem is. Within the, within the subdivision itself, we have requirements in the land development code that makes it possible for number of access points, number of connections within that, to make the traffic flow fluent, effectively, inside the, inside the, inside the subdivisions. As it gets into the local roads, it is not really a question of, I think where you're getting to is that, that the roads are substantial. getting to is that the roads are substantial. That needs to be improved. And I think Josh's numbers that he was showing is part of that. As part of resurfacing, they are going to be doing, I don't want to be misquoted, but there is going to be paved shoulders done to really provide that, to bring it to county standards. They would do that as part of those resurfacing projects. So that's part of the numbers that they have.
Okay. I was more talking about not surfacing and pavements. I get that. I know that side of transportation also. I'm talking about capacity, which is not what he was talking about.
No, he's not talking about.
He said that specifically. So we're talking about capacity issues, but I can see that it's not quite clear yet, so I'm going to leave that alone. I'm going to jump back over to you, Mr. Bellotti, which is back into your ball court. From a Public Works perspective, are we looking at anything new? I know when we talk about roadways and shoulders and paths and things like that, in urban areas, we kind of have a really good grasp on what we're talking about and what we see, what we want to see in pedestrian areas. When it comes to suburban areas, there kind of isn't always that good of a use of the areas. I'm wondering what you're thinking going forward. I know in these areas, a lot of people want to be able to walk, want to be able to jog. You talked about paths and things like that. Is there any sort of visionary thinking or anything different, you know, that you see for this area with respect to those things as we move forward?
Sure. So one of the things that we look at is our technical standards. And so last year, we did an upgrade to, or an update to the county's transportation technical manual. And we also have a Hillsborough County Design Technical Manual as well. And so as part of that update, there was revisions made to our typical sections, incorporated additional features for bike and pedestrian and other modes of transportation. We incorporated elements of the complete street guidebook that was developed, too. So I think that's the way that we're approaching it, is through our technical standards.
All right. Very good. Yeah, I get those emails on the manuals, and I saw that. So I do, you do very good work down there, and I am very complimentary of you for that. So I just wanted to bring that out. Again, there's citizens who might be watching this, and a lot of citizens had those questions, and those are things that citizens appreciate. So that's why I kind of asked the question.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to add, too, we're doing, or have done, an update of our Trails' Master Plan, and that does have a number of corridors identified. And as always, with funding, we will be able to put those trails in. We're also, with CIT Renewal, have several million dollars pledged for the creation of that trail network. We'll be talking with the development community as their plans come in. Many of them like to see those types of amenities as well, because it makes for a better community. So from our perspective, anything we can do and that we can get your support on, to have the development community partner with us to create that trail network, we're all in. Happy to do that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bowden.
Oh, talking about transportation, well, the roads and everything. I was thinking about, you talked about pretty much the county roads. I was thinking about, you didn't mention for that area, WVR2, you know, the state roads, like 674. Are you working, I know that FDOP was looking at that for an expansion. Where are you with that? Are you collaborating on that piece? Is that already captured?
Yeah, we, so we do collaborate pretty closely with FDOT on definitely where our county roads intersect with theirs, and we're intertwined pretty closely. They're looking at some plans on the future for 674. I don't want to misstate that or give you any incorrect information, because I don't know specifically, but we can certainly find out more information and bring that back to you if you'd like.
Yeah, definitely, because based on the number of houses that are projected, and 674 is definitely a main thoroughfare through there. If that is not coordinated correctly, it becomes a parking lot.
Yeah, I understand.
All right. Commissioner Kress.
Yeah, I wanted to, speaking on, staying on transportation for a second, thank you for mentioning, you know, the safety aspects, improvements, complete street type things. JP, I liked what you had to say about the subdivision design, which could help with that traffic flow, maybe not just one entrance in and out of everything. I think of trails as bicycle highways, if that helps reframe the discussion a little bit there. And I wondered how much of the county budget is allocated toward transit?
Yeah, I would say, I don't know the answer to that question.
My guess is zero. So just.
Be happy to find out.
Yeah. Yeah, let me know if I'm wrong. I would love to be wrong.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kress. I was wondering the same thing. That public transit question is a touchy one down there. Commissioner Orton.
I was wondering if there is a list of roads that are going to be improved that are in the urban service area extension, so that we could look at it, especially those like Rodine Road, or Bishop Road, or those for the new schools that are coming online?
Yes, we would be happy to provide you with that information. Absolutely.
All right. Commissioner Kress, you have another one?
I'm done with mobility, if that's okay. Okay, so moving on to a different topic. I was curious with the fire chief. I just had a question. There was a really good article in The Times on Sunday, all about pedestrian safety, and we need to do better. I'm listening to a webinar tomorrow, I think it is, about kind of how you can marry fire station growth and the needs of the fire department, response times, et cetera, with roadway safety. And I wondered if, as you're planning new stations, are you also planning for maybe a smaller vehicle type, so you don't necessarily need, you know, the wide lanes, et cetera?
Yeah, so one thing we've done is, we've looked at our operational response matrix. So we've kind of, over the last year, that's one thing we've addressed. As you currently know, the way the system has worked is, we get a call, medical call per se, we send a fire truck and an ambulance to the call. We've have, now, we have three-person rescues or ambulances, not all over the county, but we're proposing to get to that point where we spend less vehicles on the road with an additional person on the ambulance, and that'll help with that. And also, something we've done with the county is, we've got traffic preemption now at every intersection. It's about 85% now. It'll be 100% in the next four months. That actually allows us to capture the intersections, not only to get traffic back on the road, but it's a much safer way of us responding to calls. And with that, we also, there's an application, new technology out that actually alerts the drivers that we're coming down the roadway. So we're looking at different areas to try to improve that, because without a doubt, the apparatuses are big. The roads are not so big, and we got to get through those intersections. But that's some of the things we've been doing.
Is there an opportunity to potentially purchase smaller fleet with the new expansions?
So the, well, we, it's funny you say that. So our ambulances, we currently have 16 on order that are a little bit smaller than we've had in the past. The apparatus, the engine apparatus and trucks, they're not necessarily getting bigger, but they're not getting smaller either, because we do have to have quite a few, quite a bit of stuff on there to be able to, we got to have the pumps and all that for the fires and the equipment. So right now, we don't have that planned, but we do have a different response matrix that allows less units on the road.
I think there's models of other places that have been able to figure it out and pack everything more together or something.
I'm always looking for opportunities, and I actually just got back from Indianapolis with a convention that's called FDIC, the biggest fire conference in the country. So had an opportunity to look at some of that stuff. So thank you for sharing that.
Thanks for being open to it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I just want to say, give you a shout-out, Chief. I think it was good work you did on the presentation of the information, because I know I was tough on you all the first time around. There was a little bit of a lack of information. My brother's a firefighter with Tampa Fire, so very close to my heart. I'm going to give you a little pushback, Commissioner Kress, and say I wouldn't want to see them get any smaller. I think these guys need all the equipment and apparatus they can get to get out there and fight these fires, and not just the fires. They deal with things you wouldn't even imagine on a daily basis.
I'm not suggesting compromising safety in any way.
Right. I don't want to see them get too small, so I'd like to leave them where they are. I think they're doing a good job.
It was a great department, but I'll talk to you later. I'll see if I can.
We have a pretty outstanding fire department. It's due to the leadership that we have. So I'm very pleased with the direction they're taking the department. I will say, 85% of our calls are medical-related. So with today's building codes and the way things have evolved, we really focus a lot of our energy on the boxes, the rescue boxes. And those are the things, we're always looking for ways to be more innovative, because bigger boxes cost more money. But we want to make sure, to your point, Mr. Chair, we don't compromise the ability to provide good service to our citizens.
All right. Commissioner Connaught.
Yeah. Are we, in regards to trails, curious, are we RFPing or talking to our development partners about potential partnerships in that area?
So I'm not aware that we're RFPing one right now, but there are several that we will be. And I'm happy to have those conversations with anyone in the development community so that we can, you know, essentially partner, make our dollars go further, and end up with a better product at the end of the day. So yeah, if you know of anybody who wants to do that, please have them call me directly.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kress.
I had a question for parks. Are there any properties in the expansion zone that are on the Elap Wanted list, and are you still considering how corridors might fit through all this new development?
Yeah, so Elap does not fall under my Parks and Recreation, but I could get you that information. And I know they still are working to build those corridors and make sure it's all connecting. Work very closely with Forrest and his team, but I don't have that information.
Sean, do you feel pretty assured that those conversations are happening?
Sean College with your Planning Commission staff. I do. We've been talking to Forrest and his team quite a bit with the expansion, all along the way since it was started. So they're very involved in what's going on, and very aware.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Kress, keep going. Sorry.
Water, please. I'm just kind of curious. I haven't heard anything about the Dcell plant in a long time. Is that, do you happen to know the status of that?
So the Dcell plant is owned and operated by Tampa Bay Water, and it did have some very large maintenance that took place about a year ago, but it is up and operating again.
My question is, how are we with water? Do we have enough water for new development?
Well, right now, Tampa Bay Water is working on their master plan, and I believe their planning horizon is through 2050. Am I right, John? Yeah. So they're looking through 2050. So now that they have this data, they're able to increase that number. Conservation and encouraging the use of reclaimed water and better yard practices is really our best bet moving forward in the long run. As you know, in Florida, we really have two seasons. We have the very wet rainy season, and we get almost all of our rain in a three-to-four month period. And then we have the dry season. And so it's feast or famine, and it's creating a way to store it. They are looking at expanding the reservoir or adding an additional reservoir. So they are looking at other options, but if you consider the fact that almost 50% of the water in the dry season is going on the ground, that is our biggest bang for our buck, is in water conservation.
Yeah, I appreciated you including that information. I think 50 to 100 years from now, they're going to look back like, wait, what? You wasted all that water on the lawns?
I would go further. Lisa's right. There's a lot of money being spent on irrigation. I wouldn't just encourage, I would require the installation of reclaimed water. There's a challenge. If you require it and you don't pump water through it within a reasonable period of time, you might as well not even put the pipe in the ground, because you won't be able to use it. Joints dry up, and it ends up having a lot more leaks than it's worth. That being said, one of the big policy conversations that we need to have sometime in the future, with you and with our board, is, do we take that step and say, here is where you have to conserve water, and this is how you do it? I wish these were easy conversations. I wish they'd happened 20, 30 years ago, so we didn't have to sit here and talk about it, but they didn't. So we're here today to say that we recognize there's a challenge. 50% of the water just going on the ground to soak in, somebody sod. That's great. I love a green lawn, too, but that, there's long-term policy implications that we have to wrestle with.
Is anyone just generally aware, it's been my understanding that a lot of the homeowners associations require, you know, behiagrass or whatever. Is that still the case, or is that not evolved yet?
Yeah, many of them do. There are some initiatives for, and I believe I had this on here. Yeah, the Florida Water Star is an initiative through SWIP-MUD, where you're really looking at using larger bed areas, more Florida-friendly type of landscaping, less turf grass, shrinking that down, and then maximizing, or maybe I should say, making our irrigation systems more efficient. And you can really do a lot to conserve water when you do this. So those are some of the avenues that we need to be pursuing. Reclaimed water, the challenge there is it takes four homes flushing their toilets and taking showers to provide one home with reclaimed water for irrigation. So it's a great help, but it can't solve all of the problems.
Then I just wondered generally about wells and septic and the new developments.
So any of the new developments that are going in in the urban service area are required to connect to our system. The developers, we provide them with a point of connection. They need to get to it, and so that, whatever that may be. And then those become contributed assets that we take over and we manage, maintain. So they're supposed to be built and they're inspected and such to our standards, so that they meet our qualifications. When we are working with a developer on the sizing of the pipes, we're running models to make sure that the pressures are going to be appropriate, that the flows are going to be right for the development size that's going in. So for us, those contributed assets cover a lot of what, for Josh, ends up being the rural, local roads. We need to provide the main trunks, which is part of our big project, the treatment plants that can handle it. Those are the two parts where we really come into play.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any other, I see you moving, Ms. Ornita.
Well, I had written down two things from the meeting that y'all haven't asked yet, that I thought maybe, actually, they're for Mr. Gormley, if he doesn't mind, maybe addressing, I thought he might, could address them better than Jay and I tried to at the meeting, and thought maybe, Adam, you could describe the potential land development code amendment to address the issue of septic to sewer conversion?
Yes.
And then also, the way the board had asked for the mobility fees to be focused in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so, and I thought this was maybe where your question was going. I know there was discussion at this last, I'm sorry, Adam Gormley, Development Services Department, about mandatory connections to public water, public wastewater. Right now, that is the, that is the policy requirement in the urban service area. Any new development in the urban service area, which is considered one-lot split, all has to connect to public water, wastewater. And so if it's not available right now, then that project need to either wait till it comes or bear the cost of extending the lines. Water has a very similar treatment in the urban service area. There's allowed one-lot split and potentially two that can go on well water. Otherwise, it needs to go on to public water and wastewater. So the challenge that may occur in the expanded urban service areas is landowners who are sitting there with five, 10, 15 acres of land, and they want to split their lot, they're not ready to develop yet, split their lot and create a new home for a family member or sell it off to, for financial reasons. And with the new urban service area, that would require that they bring at least wastewater and potentially water to the site, which in some cases might be very, very cost prohibitive because of the length of line that needs to run. So there's a discussion to be had with the Board of County Commissioners of whether there should be an exception to that policy in general, or at least particularly for the urban service area expansion, so that landowners who aren't ready to develop yet are still able to basically have in hand what they had before, and potentially split a lot and sell off a home on a large acreage.
As to the mobility fee agreements, and this MUFASs, as we like to call them, mobility fee alternative satisfaction agreements, this has been a focus of the Board of County Commissioners. They are interested in us pursuing, partnering with developers to have them program their mobility fees to capacity enhancement transportation projects. We've had some pass success. It's not a widely used tool, but we've had one that resulted in a significant improvement to 301. We've got a partnership right now that is bringing some infrastructure for a new school, NYMMA. So that is something that the board has asked us to pursue and emphasize with developers. And frankly, it's a good way to get the infrastructure in place commensurate with the projects, if somebody's building a sub.
If somebody's building a subdivision, they're mobilized, they go out and they improve an intersection or some other significant transportation improvement. So that is another tool that the board is looking for to help kind of advance some of these transportation improvements and use the, the resources that might be mobilized already to, to build the subdivision.
All right. I see Commissioner Seabin moving out of my periphery over there.
In terms of that connection question, my only suggestion might be, you know, maybe something under a certain acreage, if there, you know, the lot split was, you know, a smaller one, and it wasn't, you know, this enormous parcel and only a portion of, of that lot, or, you know, some other special circumstance like that. I don't know if age restriction helps, but somebody who wants to retire and sell just off a portion of their land who doesn't have the funds to, you know, improve the infrastructure for the entire parcel. And so there just might be a couple different considerations for that.
Yeah, thank you. And we know, I mean, it's kind of a balance between we're trying to move people off of septic onto public wastewater. At the same time, we see many, many examples of people who come to us and they want to split their lot and tell them, this is the requirement, and it's just not cost feasible for them. So, yeah, I think your, your point's well taken of maybe looking at a, something that's not all or nothing in one way or another approach.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments, discussion items from the commissioners? Not seeing any, then we'll thank you all for your time and the great information. And did you have closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank you for your time and attention. As you know, this is a very weighty topic, and we've tried to be thoughtful in how we've talked with our board and talked with your staff. We look forward to these conversations continuing on. We have no problem coming back and having additional conversations if there's questions that you have about how we can make this work better. Our board has been very thoughtful in trying to identify areas where we could expand, and that's really, that proactive approach, I think, is what's needed for all of us to work on. So thank you very much for your time. Very much appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. We will move on to our actual business for this meeting. Item 4A, action items, and it is 4A, unincorporated Hillsborough County Land Development Codes. And the presenter is Tyreek Royal. There's like five of them, so I'll let him call them out.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission staff. I'll be presenting Brian Grady from Hillsborough County Development Services Department. It will give a brief overview of the LDC amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyreek. Again, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services, presenting the round one LDC amendments. Run through them real quick. The first one is LDC Amendment 25-0401, rezoning applications related, actually. There we go. Yep, there we go. Sorry. Sorry about that. First one is LDC 25-0399, storage of recreation vehicles and private pleasure class. This text amendment will permit the outdoor storage of recreation vehicles, private pleasure crafts, and utility trailers through a planned development zoning. This code amendment would differentiate storage of RVs, private pleasure crafts, and utility trailers from other items considered open storage when permitted in a PD zoning. The reason for this change is currently outdoor storage of RVs and private pleasure crafts is considered open storage, similar to other building materials and supplies and merchandise and equipment, metal containers, et cetera. However, experience shows that storage of RVs and boats typically serves as enabled serving commercial use that supports residential development as opposed to storage of these other items listed in the definition of open storage. Therefore, this amendment would allow for the consideration of those in areas where open storage would otherwise be allowed through the planned development zoning. Available for any questions you may have with us.
Planning Commission staff have reviewed this text amendment 250399 and found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan, including Policy 4.12, which relates to the requirement that developments meet in all established land development commercial use, I'm sorry, excuse me, land development regulations. The proposed codes address that for consideration as a neighborhood commercial use. The storage of operational boats, RVs, and utility trailers must include mitigation measures to address compatibility and protect the surrounding residential land uses. With this language included, the proposed LDC amendment is consistent with the objective 3.1 and its associated policies regarding compatibility with existing communities and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. That was that for that LDC amendment.
All right.
I'm not sure if you want to continue?
We're voting on each one individually, yeah. So, all right, I got an open public comment and all that for each one, so hang on a second. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment, by the way, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Any questions, comments, discussions on this one? Not seeing any, then I'll close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Kona?
Yeah, motion to find LDC 250399 consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. We got a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions, discussions from the commissioners before we vote? Seeing none, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Next item, commissioners, LDC 25-0400. This is non-conforming lot subdivision recognition. This text amendment will provide for a subdivision procedure to recognize non-conforming lots were, were part of a lot split after adoption of the comprehensive plan, which was July 26, 1989. Commissioners, this amendment will allow lots that need to be plotted and bring them into compliance with subdivision requirements. These new subdivisions shall not exceed the densities established in the current future land use designation and will be subject to all applicable zoning district standards except for minimum lot sizes. I do want to point out that that was a revision in the language. We discovered the language did not properly address for the exception of the minimum lot size because that's what's really driving this amendment is to allow for basically the blending of the densities so that you can basically, you can't exceed the densities. But if there's one, one or two lots that don't meet those requirements, this would allow for that recognition. This proposed LDC provision will only apply to lots in existence as of February 1st, 2025. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Planning Commission staff have reviewed this text amendment 250400 and found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan, including objective 4.1 and its associated policies. The policies require developments to comply with the existing land development regulations, ensure each land use plan category has its corresponding zoning district, and maintain consistency between existing land and future land use development regulations in the comprehensive plan. The amendment also aligns with the private property rights element, Policy 1.2, which emphasizes the consideration of property owners' rights to use, maintain, develop, and improve their property in decision-making processes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comment on this one, so I'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions, comments. Not seeing any, then I'll go on ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Kona?
Yeah, Ms., motion to find LDC 250400 consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona. Is there a second out there?
I have a second.
I'm going to go with Commissioner Seabin on this because ladies first, so. You have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona, a second by Commissioner Seabin. Are there any questions, discussions from the commissioners before we vote? I'll signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is LDC 25-0401. This is rezoning applications related to comprehensive plan amendments. This text amendment will allow an applicant to elect having a rezoning application to be heard concurrently to a related comprehensive plan amendment for unincorporated Hillsborough County. An applicant will be able to elect to have a rezoning application that is contingent on a request to amend the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County be scheduled concurrently. If, if done so, and any application proceeding in accordance with this LDC that is contingent on a request to amend the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan will be reviewed for compliance with the proposed concurrent future land use comprehensive plan amendment. So basically, the intent of that is that it will be reviewed as if the future land use plan amendment was in effect as part of the analysis to determine recommendations before the Board of County Commissioners. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Planning Commission staff has reviewed this text amendment 250401 and found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan, including Policy 4.12, which relates to the requirement that developments meet and exceed all established land development regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one, so over to the commissioners for questions, discussion? Not seeing any, then I'll go on ahead and close the public comment and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Kona?
Motion to find LDC 250401 consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. We have a motion of consistency by Commissioner Kona. Is there a second out there?
Second.
Commissioner Kress, seconds. All right. Motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona, second by Commissioner Kress. Are there any questions or discussions from the commissioners before we take our vote? Seeing none, would all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Next item is LDC 25-0402. This is maximum building height definition. This text amendment will clarify how the maximum building height is measured to be consistent with the Florida Building Code. That's FBC. The LDC currently, the Land Development Code currently defines height as the vertical distance measured from the lowest proposed finished grade of the structure vertically beneath the highest point of the structure, whereas the FBC defines height as the vertical distance from grade plane as defined in the Florida Building Code to the average height of the highest roof server, roof surface, excuse me. Updating the height definition in the LDC to align it with the Florida Building Codes will simplify and avoid conflicts during the review of building permits. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Again, Planning Commission staff has reviewed this text amendment 250402 and found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, including Policy 4.1.2, which relates to the requirement that developments meet in all established land development regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't have anyone sign up for the public comment on this one, so over to the commissioners for questions, discussion? Not seeing any, then I'll close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Kona?
Motion to find LDC 250402 consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona. Is there a second out there? Commissioner Bowden, I see you moving.
I have a second motion.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona, second by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions, discussion items from the commissioner, commissioners before we take our vote? Not seeing any, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the final item is LDC 25-0404. Minor changes to planned development revisions. This text amendment will update the administrative modifications to approve planned development districts that administrators authorize to approve. This amendment would allow two modifications to be approved administratively. The first one changes the PD site plans that include the configuration adjustments of internal driveways and/or parking areas that do not affect setbacks, buffers, side axes, or any other approved conditions or standards, and the conversion of mobile home units to single-family conventional units. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Planning Commission staff have reviewed this text amendment 250404 and found it to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, including fault policy 4.1.2, which relates to the requirement that developments meet all established land development regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment for this one, so over to the commissioners for questions, comments, discussion? Not seeing any, then I'm going to close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Commissioner Kona?
Motion to find LDC 250404 consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right. Motion of consistency by Commissioner Kona. Is there a second out there?
Second motion.
All right. Second by Commissioner Bowden. Motion of consistency finding by Commissioner Kona, second by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions, discussions from the commissioners before we take our vote? Not seeing any, then would all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the information. That was our last action item, so everybody can relax for just a little bit, and we are on to our briefings. 5A is TACPA 2501 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, 3606 West Bay to Bay Boulevard, and presenter is Emily Phelan.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. This is TACPA 2501. It's located at 3606 West Bay to Bay Boulevard. This is privately initiated, small scale. It's approximately 0.14 acres, and the request is to go from residential 10 to residential 20. This is the general location map. It's located in the South Tampa Planning District in the Palmasia neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. It's outlined in pink, and it currently has a single-family detached residence on it, which does primarily define the area. There is some commercial activity located along South Heims Avenue, as well as further west along Dale Mayberry, but that is out of sight. Wrong direction. This is the adopted future land use map. The subject site is outlined in black and represented with the residential 10 future land use designation, which does surround the subject site on all sides. At the corner of Heims and West Bay to Bay, there is residential 20 there. That was a, as a result of a plan amendment from 2018. As well as when you move further west along Heims, it's represented with the community mixed-use 35 designation. This is the proposed future land use map is represented with the residential 10, 20 Under the existing residential 10 future land use designation, the subject site could be considered for one dwelling unit or just over 1,700 square feet of non-residential uses if locational criteria is met. Under the proposed residential 20 designation, the subject site could be considered for two units or just over 2,400 square feet of non-residential uses, again, if the locational criteria is met. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
All right. Were there any questions on this one, discussions from the commissioners? I just want to ask that when it comes back before us, I'd like to know what my vote was in 2018, because I was here and it seems weird, that little brown one on the corner there, so if you could just, yeah, make a note to let me know about that corner one, so.
I will make a note and come back.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we will have 5B, TACPA 25-03 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, CBD Periphery Bonus, and the presenter is Danny Collins.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. Danny Collins with your Planning Commission staff. Today we present in TACPA 2503. This is a text amendment to the comprehensive plan related to the CBD periphery bonus, and this is specifically within the Channel District CRA. Just a quick background, this is privately initiated text amendment that was submitted as part of the February 2025 cycle. It seeks changes to the CBD periphery bonus specifically within the Channel District CRA boundary as of January 1st, 2025. The request, this is, currently the projects within the CBD periphery are limited to 100% of the maximum density intensity permitted within the applicable future land use category. As proposed, projects within the Channel District CRA would be eligible for up to a 200% increase in density intensity above the current flu category maximum. Development must meet provisions outlined in Section 27-140 of the LDC to attain the bonus, and I'll show you an example of a site here. So this is kind of how, this slide kind of shows today's bonuses and what would be proposed through this text amendment. So this is a 0.47 acre site designated RMU 100 in the Channel District CRA. So today, without a bonus, they would be eligible for 100 dwelling units or up to a 3.5 FAR. So they could be considered for 47 dwelling units or just over 71,650 square feet of residential or non-residential uses. As today, through the adopted CBD periphery bonus, they would be eligible for 200 dwelling units or, which comes out to 94 dwelling units, and then up to a 7.0 FAR, which would come out to just over 143,000 square feet of residential or non-residential development. So essentially, it would, the, the maximums would double under today's bonus. As proposed under the text amendment, the site could be eligible for up to 300 dwelling units per acre, which would give us 141 dwelling units, or up to a 10.5 FAR, which would give us over, just under 215,000 square feet of residential, non-residential uses. So essentially, this bonus would allow consideration of nearly tripling what can be considered today without a bonus. And here is a map of the Channel District CRA. So as you can see, the majority of the district is currently designated as RMU 100, approximately 93% of the district. We do have some remnants of heavy industrial just north of Twigs. That accounts for just over 10.5 acres or 7% of the district. That is HI. Overall, the district is, is trending to a more mixed-use development pattern. We've had several amendments over the past decade within the district, and it's gradually phasing out that heavy industrial that's remaining in the district. and it's gradually phasing out that heavy industrial that's remaining in the district. And I also want to note that approximately 87% of the district is within the Coles Azur area, and that's noted by this green line here on our map. With that, that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the commissioners? Not seeing any at this time. Well, thank you for the information. Look forward to this coming back to us. All right, now we are on to our, we have another, oh, I see, action item, the compensation review of the executive director. And the presenters are myself and Tracy Robbins. Somebody volunteered me for this, huh? So every year at this time, we do our review of Mrs. Ornita's contract and her performance, and we make any adjustments to her compensation and salary that we deem necessary. I believe, Tracy, everybody got the results of the survey, the analysis?
That's correct.
Okay. So at this point, I guess I'll open the floor up to any discussions or questions any commissioners have on this, or any proposals anyone might want to throw out there? This is an action item, so we do have to technically vote on this, right? Tracy?
Presuming that there's a motion made, yes.
Right, right, okay. All right, so we'll open it up to discussions, comments. Nobody's willing to, I'll go ahead and break the ice, because this is usually, I know how most people think of this as an uncomfortable conversation. And when you look at the scores of the analysis, obviously, my scores are some of the toughest that were out there. So I just wanted to say that, first of all, Mrs. Ornita is very dear to me, and I have the utmost confidence in her. But I'm also probably, because of that and how close we are, one of her toughest critics. So I did notice that my scores were a little bit skewed from a lot of other people in certain areas. But I did want to say that, you know, the reasoning for that, I guess I wanted to say is, you know, I've caught a couple exceptions and a couple things that have gone on over the past year that I probably wasn't too happy with. And I've spoke to Mrs. Ornita about those things, and she's made moves to address them and make changes in the agency to, you know, address those sorts of things, which I'm very happy about. But, you know, they did happen, and she has stood up and taken responsibility for it, as a good executive director should. So I, that's kind of what you see coming through in my scores in this list here. But again, I have the utmost confidence in her going forward. And I don't know, I just, I guess I wanted to start by putting that out there and see if anybody had any questions for me because of the scores, or if anybody had any comments that they wanted to put out there. Commissioner Crest?
Yeah, and you saw from, from, from my scores that I continue to think she does a stellar job. And I also think staff is amazing. I think we hear from pretty much anyone who's coming to present, from, you know, what we heard from Hillsborough County staff to privately initiated text amendments, that the staff does a good job. I don't know what your workload is. I think we just get a glimpse of it. But there were some mistakes made that I think were human, and I don't know how you keep up with everything. If you have statistics on anything like that you'd want to share, but I think managing everything, all the different compromises that you need to make in that position, so I think Mrs. Ornita deserves, I'm kind of looking at Megan over here. I don't know what's normal for the planning commissioner, if there's like an average, but I'd like to recommend that we compensate, we renew the contract and then compensate her well.
Sure, I'm more than happy to share that. Megan Baturney, Planning Commission Staff, HR Manager. So in this past year, we gave merit increases depending on the results of the reviews. So for a meets expectations, which was an average between a three and a 3.49, we gave a 4.5% increase. For those that exceeds, that would be an average, again, this is at a five, 3.5 to 3.9, we gave a 5% increase. For commendable, which was a 4.0 to a 4.39, we gave a 5.25% increase. And with remarkable, we gave a 5, 5.5% increase, so that would be a 4.4 and higher. So typically, we saw a lot of our staff getting the exceeds expectations, and so that was at a 5%.
All right, the total here is the 373?
Yes, I, yes, looking at the average, the mean of the averages was 3.7, which would put her at the exceeds expectations, which is a 5%. And then we also did give cost of livings as well, due to obviously the economic climate we're in and with inflation. And so with that cost of living, we, in the summer of 2024, we did a 3,700 per staff person as well. So those are some considerations, both the merit and the cost of living.
Did you get the cost of living increase? I was wondering that.
I did not.
Okay, I didn't think so. All right, Commissioner Cardenas?
Yeah, you know, I just, I wanted to comment on this for, for a reason that I, I feel like I've been on this board for a fair amount of time, and I've seen changes over time. And, you know, we, I think, I think after my second or third year, we lost several commissioners that had been on the board for a long time. And I saw us go through a little bit of a slump in our ability to really process things and do things. I mean, without Commissioner Joseph, we would not have been able to make it through that. And even then, now I see us still, like, leaning on Commissioner Joseph and some of the other commissioners to, to, to pull us through some of these things that we go through. And with that said, you know, you look at this past year, since last year to this year, you know, Melissa and the, the commission has done the same. You know, we lost Tony and, and other key people in. So, you know, in the same way that I think that we look at these scores, I think we also have to look at that over time, change that they've had to deal with, the same way that we had to deal with it, you know? It's, it's figuring out, you, you don't really realize where your problems are until, until you have them presented in public base. So, you know, with these scores, I just wanted to say that, because in the same way that I feel like we've had to kind of go through that, so have they.
Absolutely good points. Yes, Commissioner Crest?
And I'll just add, because I'm in my second term here, and I guess we're the old timers. It's gotten more complex. These are hard issues. They're long meetings, et cetera, so just, you have a lot to balance, is, is I think the point I'm trying to make here. But it's not, it's not, they're not easy subjects.
Commissioner Cardenas?
No, they're not easy subjects, and, and, and part of it is, is, you know, you lose one staff person, you lose another staff person. You've got to replace those staff people. And sometimes those people are available on the market, and sometimes they're not. And that's a struggle that is someone with, somewhat within her capacity and somewhat not, you know? So it's, you know, it's, you know, I, my commenting really is just because I see some of these scores now, and I think about it and I say, hmm, why? Well, the, the, the one thing that we've dealt with the most over the last two years that I've noticed that stands out to me is the staff that we've lost. And now, you know, we've seen lots of new staff presenting before us. Well, those new staff are learning the ropes, and they've had to have somebody teach them. And, you know, we're, we're at a loss of some of that knowledge that I think we're maybe coming full circle, maybe not just on getting that, but also coming full circle on, on how to fill in those gaps to make sure that, that the presentations are to the level that we were previously expecting.
Good points. All good points. Are there any other discussion topics or comments from the commissioners? Did anybody want to make a motion? I did have a question before we went there. Last time, we gave you a lump sum. What was that all about instead of the, I forget now, I know it was just last year, but it feels like forever ago.
Sure, last year, at this time, we were very focused as an agency on bringing the staff salaries up to, we had just completed a market equity survey, or the study, to bring staff salaries up. So I asked that any adjustment to my compensation be done as a lump sum so that any, any changes to the personnel budget were not permanent and could be, and personnel dollars could be devoted to staff salary adjustments. We have since then been able to make those market equity adjustments.
Mr. Seaman?
So I just want to make sure, is your salary then reflecting that lump sum as well, or are we going to give you 5% on last year's salary?
It would be 5% on last year's salary. That lump sum was just, was not added to my, it was just like a, it was like a bonus, but we're not supposed to call it a bonus.
So to keep up with inflation, then I would think that we should be doing more than the 5%. Just a thought.
Yeah, I'm willing to hear anything. It's, it's, you all's de jour, so yeah. Anything's possible here. Sky's the limit. Commissioner Orton?
I was just going to say, Melissa, you do a wonderful job, and she's always there to answer all of my foolish questions, and I want to thank you. But like I tell my own staff, if I give you the highest number, there's no place for you to exceed and to, you know, go further. And we're not perfect, and we all have to have a goal to reach, so that's, explains my scores.
All right.
So our, our basis for beginning here, what we had discussed, just so I'm clear, was 5%? That's a number that's been thrown out?
Mm-hmm, that's, yeah.
Okay, I, I mean, I haven't done the math on it, but just in my head, I would think that we should do more like 7% if we haven't adjusted for inflation in the past year.
7% is a pretty big number, but I mean, I, if, if the votes pass, then the votes pass. Typically, and I don't know if you, she sent out a sheet, oh, did you send it out to them? Just me? Okay. And, okay, so, in, in 2016, well, first of all, 5% is $8,863. In 2017, we did a 4% increase. In 2018, we did a 4% increase. 2019, we did a 4% increase. In 2020, during COVID, her contract got extended for three years, and we did a 2.5% lump sum, because it's not supposed to be called a bonus. In 2021, there was no increase. In 2022, we did 4.25%. And 2023, her contract was extended again to 2028, and we did another 4.25% increase. And again, last year, as we just discussed, we did the lump sum of $9,000, which was 4% plus 2,000. So our salary right now is at $177,264. So, you know, that four or five area has been kind of characteristic in the past. Again, it, we're, it's all at our discretion, so I'm not saying not, but I'm just letting you know what's coming past there, so.
It, it's just worth noting probably that it sounds like there were three years in there where there weren't increases as a percentage. I know the lump sum probably throws it off a little bit, so that, there were three years in there where we didn't account for inflation at all.
All right. Commissioner Kona?
I, I think I'm kind of in, going in the direction of Commissioner Seaman. Maybe not seven, maybe six, I think is probably a good number. And, you know, no technically cost of living, we just kind of include that in there. Yeah, I would feel, I would feel comfortable with that to get her salary to a point where then, you know, next year, we can probably go back to the, to the standard.
Okay. Any thoughts on that, any?
I'll second that.
Commissioner, was that, whoa.
Throwing it out in the atmosphere.
I don't think it's a motion just yet, but I'll come back to Commissioner Kona for, for it. Are there any thoughts, discussions? Commissioner Crest?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Kona. I feel like you don't want to be too high above the, kind of like the rest of staff, not to make you feel uncomfortable, like there's this disparity there. So I think kind of, you know, what Megan outlined is 6% is probably right in there.
All right. All right, were there any other discussion items?
I can agree with the, the commissioners in regards to the 6%.
All right, sounds like we got a lot of agreement going here around the 6%, so I'll open it up for motions then. Commissioner Kona?
I'll make a motion to renew the contract at a, with a 6% increase.
Right. Is there a second out there? Any, Commissioner Cardenas? All right, we have, oh, I see Tracy moving.
I, I would just like clarification on what, what the verbiage of renew the contract is. Is that for, to extend it out for a period of, I think it was five-year increments? Was it not?
Right, right now, it's to 2028.
Right. If you renewed the contract, it's been renewed for five-year periods in the past. Is, is the motion including an extension of the, of the current?
I would say the motion is to continue the current contract with a 6% increase.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So agreement on that. We have a 6% increase motion at the same contract, just increased rate. And a second to that by Commissioner Cardenas. Are there any questions or clarifications needed from the commissioners before we take our vote? Not seeing any, so would all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up on the agenda, we have the Executive Director's Report. Staff reports, contracts, and other items by Melissa Zornita.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the feedback and kind words. It is, continues to be my honor to serve as the Executive Director of this organization. It is just something I take a lot of pride in, and I really appreciate the feedback. It has been not our best year, and so I very much am very transparent about that we've had some, some difficulties. I appreciate the acknowledgement that we have some newer staff. That's part of why, as I discussed at the last meeting, we've done the reorganization. We have Mr. College in a new role. He's a great mentor of staff, and I think we'll be able to spend some time coaching a lot of those newer staff in, in, in an important way to, to bring them along with the type of presentation and staff reports and things that you've all have come to expect. So look forward to that. A couple of things I wanted to highlight from the report that's at your seat. We have begun work on the update of the Plant City Comprehensive Plan. And the update there, we met in the end of February with the Plant City staff, and then have had an internal project kickoff. We're meeting the end of this week with the Plant City internal departments to have a kickoff with them. One thing that we would like to do a little bit differently from some of the other jurisdictions is we would like to have a joint meeting of you all with the Plant City Commission to, as part of this process, so that you all can hear from them, and they all can hear from you about some of the issues that are facing the city early in the process to help shape the, the update of the comprehensive plan jointly. The city manager was very, thought that was a good idea and receptive to that idea. I had the opportunity, right before spring break, to participate in a Ryan Neese Foundation event, presenting to a number of classes at Plant City High School about career and planning, and had the opportunity to make a great connection with one of the teachers out there, and an opportunity, we think, in the fall to get their students involved in the Plant City update, too. So it was really synergistic, all the opportunities with Plant City. We've had three community meetings with regard to the update of the Riverview Community Plan, which has kicked off. We're doing that, looking specifically at that in conjunction with Thea and their look at the US 301 corridor and the potential to extend the Crosstown Expressway down to Big Bend Road. Myself and a few other staff members attended the APA National Conference in Denver at the end of March, beginning of April. We also, I've had, am giving a presentation in, on Wednesday at the, a group called Forward Tampa Bay. We had, I had a preparation call for that last week. And we have, we had a number of staff, as well as two of our planning commissioners, participate in the port cleanup last Friday. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. We also, I wanted to, we had a couple of plan amendments that were moved forward by the Board of County Commissioners last month. I mentioned the large-scale amendments for the publicly initiated plan amendments on the urban service area, but there also were two small-scale plan amendments, both of them at, in the Causeway 78th Street area that were adopted by the board at that same hearing. So those all were moved forward. There were no other updates on plan amendments during the last month. Your next meeting- Your next meeting will be on May 12th. There's been quite a bit of email traffic regarding the Tampa Plan Update, much of which you all have been copied on. So I wanted to take a minute and address that. First of all, I wanted to let you all know that I'm going to be leaving you off future replies to that email because in talking with Tracy, we think that is wise from a public records standpoint, so no one accidentally replies in a way that is communicating with your fellow commissioners in a way that's not appropriate from a sunshine standpoint. Second, I just wanted to make clear that staff's recommendation on the policy updates in the Tampa Plan Update were absolutely independent. We made those based on a lot of research and analysis. We did not come up with these recommendations lightly. We do take into account the input of stakeholders, and we synthesize that with our independent professional knowledge, the research and analysis that we've done, and we try to balance all perspectives. We do take into account the input we get from city council, trends that we see in development approvals that we see that come from this board and from city council. And we have to recognize that. We can't make these decisions in a vacuum. And what we have to recognize that the policies that we put forward are being implemented by city staff. So we take into account what city staff's feedback is on these policies. We recognize that these policies have to get adopted by city council, so we take into account city council feedback. We did the same thing with the Board of County Commissioners as we workshop things with them. I think it would not be prudent for us to be listening to our elected officials who are representing their constituents throughout this process. But certainly, we take that into account and balance that with all of the information that we have and our planning knowledge and our research. So as you can tell, I bristled a little bit at the implication that our staff was not giving you independent and the best recommendations that we could. I absolutely believe that we did, and that we will continue to do so. The, the request in those emails was that, was that we have sort of a free-flow workshop that would have sort of an open-ended discussion between you all and the development community. While the Planning Commission bylaws do contemplate having workshops that include public comment, they specify that a public participation workshop is the type where advanced public notice is provided, and the public is encouraged to attend and register to speak on the agenda. So there is a format and a structure to that type of a workshop. It would be open to all of the public, and it would be structured in a manner where they would have to register to speak. And unless we envision having an all-day workshop, I think there would have to be time limits and to people getting to speak, and there would have to be a, a structure to that. It could not be an open-ended, free-flowing discussion. In essence, it would have to be quite similar to a public hearing. We have already had one public hearing, and at your direction, that was continued. We're going to have another one on May 12th. I believe that all parties have had multiple opportunities to participate and provide direct input to you all. They've had a lot of opportunities to have direct input to staff and can continue to do that. We are making ourselves available to anyone who wants to have meetings with us, phone calls, send us emails. We're happy to continue to do that over the next month. It is my thought that we are continuing on the direction to have, to move forward on the direction that you gave us. You all gave us direction to make policy changes in a certain way that I felt very clear about, and bring that back on May 12th. And unless I hear consensus from you all to go in a different direction, that's the path I'm continuing down. But I want to see if anyone.
Commissioner Seaman.
There's been so much conversation about this, and I know it affects so many people, and so many people feel very strongly about it. And I think because it's something that could, this is a big decision that we're going to make, especially about the coastal high hazard area and prohibiting applicants from being able to apply for future land use changes in the future as it relates to that. And I think, and because of some of the density increases and decreases, and the fact that you guys and City of Tampa have been working on this for years, I just, in order, I just feel like it might be prudent to let people have their few minutes to speak on it in an open forum. I realize that that requires more work from everyone, but just so that everyone feels like they're participating, if they felt like they haven't participated yet, might be helpful. Just my thought.
Commissioner Kress.
No, I was just gonna say, now, I understood the direction from last Monday to be that we were going to change the policy to no longer prohibit plan amendments in the coastal high hazard area. That's the direction, like, that's the type of direction that I, that's how clear I understood your all's direction. In my mind, part of the danger in opening it back up in that sort of public forum is you're going to get everybody, a room full of people, who are also going to tell you the opposite of that direction. So I'm just being devil's advocate, that you're going to get both sides.
I, I appreciate that. I just, maybe the solution then isn't some sort of open forum. Maybe it's more time for the people who feel like they haven't had time to review and opine on this. It just seems like from that email that, that people feel like this all came out of nowhere. I disagree with that. I know that it did not come out of nowhere because I have participated with you in meetings about it in the past few months. But, you know, I think it is important to feel, for those stakeholders in the community to feel like they've had their voices heard and that, you know, we aren't just listening to a small, loud minority, as some have said. And so it's just a thought, maybe more time is the answer. I'm not sure exactly what the answer is. I just sort of wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kress.
Yeah, I am sensitive to that, and I know that as a planner, you, you always want as much public input as you can get.
Yeah.
However, we did just have a public hearing, and I don't remember seeing them at the hearing. I think you meet with the, the development, what's the name of the?
The Builders Association.
The Builders Association, thank you. There has been a lot of opportunities for public input. We are having one more public hearing in May. So I, I'm just kind of surmising that they just didn't get what they wanted, so they're gonna, they just want to find ways to keep pushing for that. And I do recognize, as I said earlier, you, your staff, I think, has done a really valiant job at compromising. You're not going to like every single bit of it, but I think it's something that we can all live with. So I think we're, I think we're good on the path that you have outlined.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Kress, just to throw that out there. Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, I'm kind of in an interesting spot, just because while I, I think public input is 100% needed and required at all times, at the same time, we are a public service body. We are volunteers here, trying to help make decisions for those people where they're not our constituents. We are them. So for me, when I see it, you know, we understand a bit more than them because we do this all the time. So we know what we're really, our purview is, and often they do not. They don't fully understand that. So I, you know, I, for me, it's kind of like, I already know which way I can see it, and I believe that all of us do see it as well. So I, I don't always feel like more is necessarily needed. If anything, I sometimes feel like less is more because we're, you know, we're kind of looking through it pretty clearly, I feel.
Well, good points. Commissioner Seaman.
I did ask in an email, and probably worth asking, you know, here, if we're allowed to attend that Builders Association meeting, or if that would be prudent or not prudent, or if that flies in the face of some regulation. I just was curious.
Yeah, that was actually my next thing to talk about. So, so that meeting as well as, well, is something we were invited to go present to. So it is not something that we have organized. So I do not have the ability to advertise the meeting as a noticed public meeting. So that is certainly open to any planning commissioner to attend. But if you do, and there's more than one of you there, you need to be mindful of sunshine law because it is not, it would not be noticed as a public meeting, and I'll let Tracy expand upon that.
Commissioners, just a brief review. An expansion on what, what Melissa said, you are unable to consult or communicate with each other outside of a public meeting on your thoughts and ideas about a particular item that's going to come back before the board, which is exactly the, the fact pattern that we have here today. And Melissa's absolutely correct. If, if one of you shows up at the meeting, the Builders Meeting, that's not going to present a problem if you choose to listen or if you choose to contribute. But if two or more of you find yourself in the room at the same time, I think what's likely to happen, based on the discussion I'm hearing here, is that one of you is going to want to speak up, and the other two better be headed for the door so that they don't hear the comments of the first commissioner. It's going to be a little bit of, you know, a shuffle, so to speak, to make sure that you're trying to extricate yourself from a potential sunshine law violation. So if you choose to do that, I mean, I know some of these meetings are members only. Some of them are, seems like there was another group that, might not have been a members-only group that was on an email that wanted to do something very similar. These, these groups are going to have different invitations and different opportunities perhaps for, and different interests for different board members. There may be, Commissioner Kress may have an interest in, in a entity that she works with that's different from another commissioner, for example. So be on your guard. Take a good look around the room. Pay attention to who's asking for the microphone. And for those of you who didn't ask for the microphone, I would strongly encourage you to exit the room until that part of the discussion, for that matter, is, is completed and a different topic is up. For your own protection.
Commissioner Orton.
It seems like this is a meeting we shouldn't attend because they are encouraging us to build in the coastal high hazard area, if it's a building association. I mean, that's what they want us to do, is to build everywhere. And they're going to talk to us about how we can build, you know, to make it environmentally safe or engineering safe or things like that because they want to make sure people are building in the coastal high hazard area.
Thank you. Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've been in meetings where, where city council, different city council members have been in the meeting, and they, you know, they know each other. They just kind of get up and walk out.
Yeah.
Hoop your mic.
They make a point of saying that out publicly so everybody hears it. They say, hey, I'm going to step out, you know, so.
Or you could just be quiet and not say anything. I mean, if no one says anything, then, you know, there's, there's not an issue there, so.
Right. As long as all of the commissioners who are attending are there to gather information for their own personal use, it doesn't present a problem.
Right. It's when you speak that becomes the problem. So everybody, keep that in mind. Everybody gets scared about this, you know, sunshine law. If you just shut your mouth, then there's not an issue, right? So reminder. I know it can be difficult at times. I did have a comment, too, on your last, on the email chain. You said you're going to take us all off of it. I was wondering if we could just get BCC'd on it after you get it, because if you blind CC everybody, then it doesn't, no one can reply to the group. They reply to the sender only, and they can't see who else it was sent to, so.
That's a great suggestion.
You know.
But, does that work, Tracy?
That works just fine. I was going to suggest to you, when you do that, that you put a notation in all caps at the bottom of it, the planning commissioners, please do not hit the reply to all button due to sunshine law prohibitions. Something simple that would get everybody's attention and remind you to not reply to all on that, and be sensitive to it.
Right. There shouldn't be a reply to all, though, on a BCC. It should just be to the sender. So if Melissa sends it to us, then it's, even if we hit reply.
They shouldn't be able to reply all to and get them.
But it's still a good reminder. It's always good to have that reminder.
I would recommend.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Kona.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Zornita. I don't think there's an appetite to have another meeting before the, our, our May meeting. I do think this board acted very wisely at the last meeting and, and kicked it, kicked it down the road until we got some more clarification. And I think, you know, I feel comfortable that you guys are going to provide that and provide that information, and then let the public come to that meeting, and, and we'll see where the chips fall. But nothing's a done deal yet, and I'm sure all the information that we can receive, you know, from this point till the next meeting, I'm sure we'll get plenty of feedback. But I don't think having another meeting in that regard is worth any more of our time than to have it in May, so.
Right. I also want to remind everybody that we are a recommending board, right? The final decision lies with city council. So we could do 1,000 meetings, and we can say all the stuff we want to say, and then it'll go to city council, and they have the final say. We have no authority over them. We have no power to make them do anything. So none of us is getting paid to be here. So let's keep that in mind as we start signing up for more and more meetings to try and, you know, it, it can, your best wishes will get turned upside down when it goes to the next level, so you got to keep that in mind. Mr. Seaman.
Good point. Thank you for that.
Well, and if it's like the Board of County Commissioners, they ask for more changes af- after that, too. So, you know, this, this process, it evolves.
Right. Commissioner Kress.
I was going to change subjects. If that's okay.
Sure.
We're done. I don't know Plant City at all, and I, I look forward to the joint meeting. And I wondered if it, unless it's a big pain, if there could be just maybe like a little tour or something to kind of pay attention to what we should be paying attention to.
That's a great idea.
I have a minivan. I'm happy to drive if that helps.
Okay, no, a tour's a great idea. Yeah.
Yeah, tell Mayor Kilton I said, bring us strawberries. We want strawberries.
Okay, okay.
You could tell Mayor Kilton I said that.
Strawberries and a tour. We can do that.
Right. Were there any other? Commissioner Orton.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the, setting up those, those sessions.
Oh, the briefings.
The briefing was very helpful, very, you know, cut down on my reading time. You know, it helped to, you know, depth through some of the policies as well. So, you know, ask some of the questions, so this way maybe we can cut some of the, the time as far as some of the hearings. So thank you very much.
Sure thing. I, I thank you for bringing that up because I did want to mention that I know with the meetings kind of back-to-back, there were a lot of emails from Lauren about setting up the, the briefings. If anyone did not get a reoccurring monthly briefing set up and would like to, we can do that. I know some people ended up getting the, the briefing for the Tampa Comp Plan and then not the one for today's meeting. And I wasn't sure if that was purposeful or just because there was a lot going on. So if anyone would like the monthly briefing setup, okay, we'll get that coordinated then. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Is that it? All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to our next agenda item. Other business, chairs business. I have none. Is there any old business? I don't believe there's any, any new business. Anyone? Not seeing any. We'll move on to committee reports. I have a quick committee report somewhere here in my stack of stuff from the Transportation Board. In our last meeting on April 9th, we said farewell to Secretary David Gwynn, who is retiring and moving on to greener pastures and fun stuff other than the Transportation Board, and said hello to Justin Hall, who will be replacing him as District 7 Secretary. We did an amendment to the tip at Branch Forbes, Branch Forbes Road and McIntosh Road, two widening projects. We did a look at general planning consultant procurement. Megan Baturney, who is part of our staff, was there. Megan Baturney, who is part of our staff, was there for that. She did an excellent job of presenting how the TPO goes about picking its consultants, and where we're going next with trying to get procurement and contracts going. And we did a look at a workshop with the agencies, Hillsborough County Agencies, on the TPO priorities list. A lot of these people you saw in here tonight were there also, talking about what priorities they want to see on the priorities list of transportation projects going forward. We also got a presentation on the Suncoast Parkway, P D and E, from Van Dyke Road up to State 52 across the county line up there. I guess they're going to be widening the Suncoast Parkway up there. They got a lot of capacity issues going on up there, people coming from out of the county into the county, and into the county, out of the county, using that route. We also heard about the Tampa Bay Times article Commissioner Cress mentioned on pedestrian safety. It's a great article, you should check it out if you haven't checked it out already. TPO staff had a lot of involvement and data and opinions on that. We talked about some legislative bills and some reimbursement stuff that Tallahassee was sending back to Washington, but the TPO felt confident that the projects they were planning on using the money for would be able to be covered. It was mostly for sidewalk gaps and things like that, and Johnny felt that they would still be able to get those things done with some shifts in the budget. So that was it for the Transportation Board meeting. Are there any other committee reports? Not seeing any? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Bowden.
From the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, many of you may not be aware of the $709 million that the county has in regards to disaster recovery. The county has until July, July, the end of July is the close date for the action plan as to how that, those grants are going to be administered and dispersed. I want to understand this broad base as to how they could utilize everything from actually building new homes to rehab and renovations.
All right. Any other committee reports, commissioners? Not seeing any, then we will, well, that was it. I guess that is the end of the meeting, but before we go, we will see everyone back here. Are we going to keep it at the same time, the announced time? Yeah, okay. We'll see everybody back here at 5:30 for the public hearing, and at 5:07, this regular meeting is adjourned.